...the Tacoma School Board of Directors for Thursday, April 12th, 2018 to order. Would you please rise for the flag salute? I'd like to have one of our students, perhaps. Would you lead us, please?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the General Counsel please call the roll?
Vice President Viall.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Hines.
Here.
And is President Cobb excused this evening?
Yes, you forgot.
I was giving him just a moment to s- I was trying to be graceful and like give him a moment to sit down and get to the microphone.
I was gonna have you just call on him and see how quick he was on his feet, but...
Hopefully, I delayed long enough now that I can say, and Director Leon.
I'm here now.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, she is excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and any questions or comments on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, agenda is adopted. Item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Recognition of Lincoln Cheer Team who placed first in the state Stomp Division. I think, Mr. Volpelle, this is yours.
Thank you, Vice President Viall, and members of the board. Lincoln High School has added a new honor to a growing list of academic and athletic accomplishments. This year, for the first time, the Washington State Cheerleading Competition included a Stomp Division competition. The Lincoln High School Cheer Squad, led by Coach Crystal Welch, choreographed its own routine and qualified for the state competition by winning a regional event in Gig Harbor in January. And then at the state competition at Battleground High School, Lincoln's team edged out Renton by less than three points for the state title. They'll have a little treat for you tonight as well. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Coach Welch and the state champion Lincoln Abe's Cheer Squad.
Go Abe!
Woo hoo!
Can I move this down? Thank you so much for having us. My name is Crystal Welch, and I'd like to introduce the 2017-18 Stomp Champions from Lincoln High School. First, we have Zaita Lewis, she's a sophomore. We have Divine Bennett, she's also a sophomore. We have Hakiva Savar, who is a junior. We have De'ajnay Young, who is a sophomore. We have Cheyenne Welch, who is a junior, and April Howard, who is a senior. All right, so we're gonna, we have a little treat for you. Should we go here or there?
Up here.
Okay, up here?
Right up here. Get on, come up on the stage.
Should we go down there, do you think?
I don't know, should we go down and sit and see?
I think we should. I think we should.
It's kinda late, we'll just, Scott, you wanna go down?
I think right.
We're good.
We are the A's! From Leaking High School, you know we can't do quit! We not come to quit! We are the A's! From Leaking High School, you know we can't do quit! We not come to quit! Leaking A's! Leaking A's!
We would like to have you come up so we can shake your hands and congratulate you.
Congratulations.
Awesome job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Awesome job.
Way to go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for having us.
Congratulations. Awesome. Thanks for what you do for the kids, by the way.
This is the first and they've completed.
So back-to-back next year, right, Coach?
Yeah, well, we definitely will start a tradition. We will own it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
You're welcome. Thank you. Item five two. Thank you, Lincoln Abe's Stomp Team, I mean, awesome, and once again, just an example of what our kids in the school district are doing. And we have another great example in the next item, which is 5.2, recognition of Mount Tahoma and Stadium Unified Sports Division One and Two Basketball Champions.
Thank you, Vice President Viall, and members of the board. You have made an important policy and financial investment in expanding inclusive practices to ensure all students get the opportunities and support they need to succeed. That commitment includes the athletic fields and gyms where Tacoma Public Schools has become a leading advocate in unified sports. The Unified Sports Basketball season ended recently, and we have two teams to honor tonight as champions in their respective divisions. Before I call the teams forward, I want to tell you that the Stadium High School's Unified Team had to turn up the defense to beat University High School 35 to 30 in its gold medal game. And Mount Tahoma High School's Unified Team had to go to overtime against Evergreen High School in the gold medal game to eke out a two-point win. I will let the coaches for each team introduce their players to you. Please welcome your state champions from Stadium and Mount Tahoma High Schools.
Hi, I'm Michael Bigg, and I'm the head coach at the Mount Tahoma High School. This is Joseph McInturf and Darnell Dixon. Darnell's our highest scorer for the season. He played great time, and Joseph was my defensive specialist, so he did a good job. We have a couple more boys that are trying to get on their way, so hopefully they'll get up here. We had an awesome season and awesome time representing Tacoma School District this year.
I need to mention, I have my assistant coaches with me, Kimberly Miller, Chris Winkler, and Pete Flatam.
Would you like to come up so we can shake all of your hands? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Coach.
Thank you so much.
Thank you too. Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you so much. You're a great student.
Oh, there's one more coach that I think has just run up. If you wanna introduce him.
Oh, we got one more.
This is Dante Boone.
All right.
One of my great players.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Okay, now for Stadium.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Miles Viall. I was the coach of the Stadium Unified Basketball Team. My assistant at the end there, Zildjian Vires. And the players that were able to attend tonight, Alyssa Luther, Sophia Benzine, Romel Francis, and Kareem Brown.
That's everybody.
Yeah, and we're missing Cody Hamilton, Kyle Kreischer, and Kiwan Fundu. And this was the first year that Stadium has had a unified basketball team, so we didn't know what to expect, and we certainly didn't expect this, but we are certainly glad that it happened. We grew together, and the team was very tight-knit and hung together really well. We're really proud of everybody. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Would you please come up?
Congratulations. 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 There you go. Congratulations. Great job. Whoopsie.
If you could ask for the three, the three in the market, that'd be awesome. Thanks, woman.
Moving on, item 5.3. And I believe that this young man marks about the third in a row from his high school being
a National Merit finalist. Recognition of Wilson High School student, Oster Kristoff, as a National Merit Scholar finalist for 2018. Mr. Volpelle.
Thank you, Vice President Viall, and members of the board. In February, the National Merit Scholar Selection Committee announced 2,500 winners from across the country for its most prestigious honor, the title of National Merit Scholar, and of course, the scholarship that comes with it. The scholars selected by the committee are those determined to have the strongest combination of attributes and accomplishments and the greatest potential for future success in college studies and beyond. And that's based on their rigorous academic load, their performance, community involvement in service, other activities, personal essay and recommendations. And we have a winner, Wilson High School's Oscar Kristoff. Now, I'm gonna let him talk about his future in a minute, but I wanted to let you know, if you look at the description written in your agenda, you can see that his record of activities is very broad and deep. In fact, we intended to honor him at last month's meeting, but he was busy with a band concert. So our viewers can understand Oscar's commitments, I want to point out that he has challenged himself and excelled with advanced placement courses, participated in band, robotics, track, cross-country, running club, and is involved in his church music program. The staff at Wilson describe Oscar as focused, modest, and positive, and easily earns welcomed acceptance and respect with any group of individuals with whom he interacts. Here is your 2018 National Merit Scholar, Mr. Oscar Kristoff.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all the support I've gotten over the years from Tacoma Public Schools for my academic, athletic, and musical interests.
Thank you, Oscar.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Great job. Okay, let me figure out how I get back here on my agenda. For some reason, it does not want to let me pop back there. All right.
Item 5.4. And I know what a, having a son who achieved a state championship in wrestling, and Dr. Garcia, who did too, how hard it is to get that far. And tonight, we're recognizing Wilson Wrestler, Lena Flanagan, who finished her career as state champion with a 37 and 1 record in her wrestling career.
Thank you, President Viall, and members of the board. I do know you have a soft spot in your heart for championship wrestlers.
You do. You know.
Tonight, we are honoring a graduating senior who did complete her final season with the 37 and 1 record and the 3A, 155-pound girls' state wrestling championship. And not only that, she's currently ranked fifth in the nation for her weight class.
Ooh.
I'll tell you a little more about her in a second, but please welcome up Wilson High School's Lena Flanagan. I thought she was gonna take me down there for a minute. I swear.
I'd be scared if I were you, too.
You should know that Lena ended her high school wrestling career with 126 wins and 17 losses. She also is an 11-season varsity letterman in soccer and track and field, in addition to wrestling, and is likely to add her 12th varsity letter this spring in water polo. Despite her grueling sports travel schedule, she has achieved academic excellence as a 3.8 high school GPA grade point average. I will let her tell you more about her college scholarship and her ultimate goal. Once again, please honor your state champion Lena Flanagan.
I'm not that tall. Okay, I just wanna say thank you to Tacoma Public Schools for their support in women's wrestling. It's the fastest-growing collegiate sport at this time, which is very exciting. I'd also like to thank personally my school. They've been very supportive of the females team with like tournaments and scheduling and whatnot. And then again, my parents for their never-ending support, and my coaches, Mr. Winn and Coach Dickerson, you know, taking us to tournaments and curating opportunities for us. It's been really great. I'd like to take this time to just bring awareness. I'm starting a scholarship. It was actually this year. It's called the Lena Flanagan Freestyle Greco Scholarship. It offers high school athletes the opportunity to bridge into a freestyle season. So, in, well, in wrestling, there's three styles. There's folk style, which is a style that we do in the United States in high school and men's college, and then there's freestyle and greco, which is what we do in the Olympics. So, as an aim to increase the number of athletes from Washington participating in freestyle and greco, which is our nation's like goal for the Olympics and, you know, world team and whatnot, I'm starting a scholarship that offers students ages 18, or 14 to 18, the opportunity to bridge into a freestyle season. So, this scholarship, it's application-based, it offers the student a year's club fee, so to be part of a team, you have to pay a club fee, and then, a freestyle club fee. And then, it offers them, they get custom singlets with their names on it and stuff, and then, they get five tournaments so that they can explore and experience a season. And then, as well as their USA card, which is their insurance, so then if anything happens, you know, knock on wood, they're covered. So, it's really exciting. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me. It's at thelena scholarship at gmail dot com if you need any extra information. Again, thank you Tacoma Public Schools and Wilson, and like all the never-ending support from my parents and other members of my community. Thank you.
Lena, would you come up here, please?
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations, school reps. Well, awesome. All right. Item six, members of the public wishing to address the board.
The school board, school board members encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, please follow these steps. First, complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have three minutes to share your comments, and as always, we ask that those comments be civil and appropriate in nature. Do we have any members wishing to address the board this evening?
No.
No, okay. Thank you. Moving on, item seven, superintendent's report. There is none. Item eight, consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt.
I move adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Mr. Hines.
Just a general question. When I was looking at the different trips for our students, is there a policy or guidance on ratio for chaperone to student?
Good question.
I'm happy to address that. Director Hines, we have a process that vets each application for a trip that includes a supervision plan. And so, the ratio depends on the type of activity. For example, if there are water activities involved, there is a much higher ratio, meaning more supervision to students. So, it depends on the activity, the legal department reviews each application, and then ultimately, Assistant Superintendent Pace approves.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Any more questions? Comments?
That's what I was hoping to hear.
Yeah, me too. I thought, actually, I kinda knew that because we went on an international trip with some kids a number of years ago. And hearing no further questions or comments, all those in favor of adopting consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, agenda's adopted. Item nine, policy matters, first reading, policy 6105, federal funds, financial management. I know this is a first reading, but we've kinda talked about discussing it a bit. Ms. Medina, are you gonna talk about, can you tell us what this is? Or whoever can, just briefly.
Yeah, I mean, right, so either an A or I could. We're both prepared to. And this was a policy that was put in place as a recommendation of the state auditor's office. They came out and indicated that this is a deficiency in our policies, mostly just in documentation. We used the WASDA model policy for development of this policy, and it really just outlines our current practices and says, here's how we're going to go about managing our federal dollars using our system and what data and information we're required to keep.
So, basically, this just brings us kind of in compliance with what the state auditor would like us to have.
With their expectations, yes.
Okay. More of a procedural thing than it is substantive, correctly. Correct?
Did you wanna add anything?
I'd just add that legal has reviewed it. We're completely in support. Again, it follows the WASDA model policy, and also, the policy is going to be circulated with the citizens' audit and finance committee. As Director Hines has pointed out to us, we want to get community feedback in the process of implementing policy, and so, we thought that that would be the best avenue for getting community feedback.
And that will be meeting next month. The committee will be both.
Yes, I was...
Director Winskill and I serve on that committee.
I was intending to send it out in the interim so that we didn't have to wait before we brought it back.
That's fine. Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Pretty cut and dry. Yeah, I just...
Not super complicated.
No, not rocket science.
Didn't take me an hour to read.
No, fortunately. Okay, thank you. Item 10, quarterly financial update, none. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org about finance. Moving on, item 11, curriculum instruction, there are none. Item 12, business matters, adoption of revol- revolution, where my mind is tonight, 12, adoption of resolution number 2040 and approval of the assignment of teachers to classes other than in their areas of endorsement. Ms. Nolan, I assume that's you.
Yes, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number 2040, which permits the assignment of teachers to classes other than those in their areas of endorsement for the second semester of the 2017-2018 school year.
I'll move approval.
Second.
And moved and seconded, are there any questions or comments of the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources?
I just had a question about chemistry in FOS, because it just doesn't, you know, I can look at many of those classes and see that people have training, like a biology degree, and they're teaching marine biology, and the principles of biology are the same, but I look at chemistry, and it's not even a science background, and that's a little bit of a concern. I wouldn't want my children in a class like that, so that's...
Thank you for addressing that concern. I will let you know that that particular teacher definitely holds multiple endorsements, just not specifically in that particular area of science. And of course, each school has a highly viable plan that they're working closely with Human Resources on.
So, do they do training, and people help them develop plans?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So, I see it, like, there's AP Physics, so I can see where the AP, if you follow the AP curriculum, you've got a curriculum right there, and it's easier to do, but it's just a little bit more concerning for a regular class, so...
Yeah, designated support within the school building and a plan that's established with Human Resources for support.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I just want to thank you, Assistant Superintendent Nolan, for sending us that very cogent and succinct email that explained exactly how we go about doing this and why we have to do it in terms of shortages of teachers, and I'm confident that we're not putting anyone in a classroom that cannot teach the subject. And I know, see, you made reference to that, what will happen if that does occur. So, thank you very much for doing that. It made things much easier for us. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, resolution is adopted 5.0. Moving on, item number 12-2, approval of the computers and printers for Career and Technical Programs at Middle and High School. Ms. Pace.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the technology upgrade purchase of computers and printers in the amount of $275,000 for the Career and Technical Education Department. Funding source: Career and Technical Education, Middle and High School Annual Budget and Carl Perkins Grant.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 12-2. Are there any questions or comments of Ms. Pace? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing no nays, the resolution's adopted 5.0. Item 12-3, approval of increase for maximum health, maximum healthcare contract for TSD-17-037.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services recommends the Board approves the increase of $395,000 for maximum healthcare contract for the 2017-18 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments of the Deputy Superintendent? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution's adopted. Item, moving on, item 13, other business, none. Report to the board this evening, there is none. Board comments, individual board members may comment on any topic they deem pertinent and report on any recent activities. Dr. Leon, I'll start with you. If you have anything you'd like to share with us.
Sure, yeah. I am, pleasure of attending the Mount Tahoma Multicultural Festivity Night. Is that the right title for the name? And it was very well attended, saw some wonderful exhibits, kind of exhibits of dance and cultural traditions from around the whole country that were exhibited right there in Mount T. So, nice job to Mount Tahoma, and to you.
Thank you. Director Hines.
No report tonight.
Okay. Director Winskill.
So, I went to the Mount Tahoma event also, and I've never seen anything quite like it. It was just quite amazing to see all those people in costumes and doing so many interesting things, so I just was super impressed. So, they did it for the parents that evening, and then the next day, they do it for the students, but I appreciated being asked. And then, I just wanna talk a little bit about my trip to San Antonio for the school board convention, just one thing, session that I attended. So, I did the early bird on Friday, and we went to a sports school, athletic school, and it actually turned out to be one of the better things I've ever done, and other people who were there said the same thing, and these are people who've been on school boards for a long time. So, they had a $70 million complex for sports alone, so it's very, Texas, sports is like king, you know? And, but they, actually, it's all about character development, and they, so the, several hours we were there, they talked about character development, how it is associated with all the sports. But there are 106,000 students in this district, it's a little bit north of San Antonio, and their graduation rate is 95 percent. And it was just amazing. And it was, I mean, it was super good, so...
Great.
It's about it. I said a lot of other good, everything I went to was worthwhile, so...
Awesome. Thank you. I, yeah, I have heard of that high school. My husband's first cousin was the first basketball coach for the D-1 program at University of Texas, San Antonio. And like he said, sports is king in Texas, and they really spend a lot of money on that. So, that'd be, I bet that was an interesting, I would love to have seen what it, what it looked like. Director Heinz.
No report tonight.
Okay, Director Winskill.
So I went to the Mount to Homa event also, and I've never seen anything quite like it. It was just quite amazing to see all those people in costumes and doing so many interesting things. So I just was super impressed, and so they did it for the parents that evening, and then the next day they do it for the students, but I appreciated being asked. And then I just want to talk a little bit about my trip to San Antonio for the school board convention, just one thing, session that I attended. So I did the early bird on Friday, and we went to a sports school, athletic school. And it actually turned out to be one of the better things that I've ever done, and other people who were there said the same thing, and these are people who've been on school boards for a long time. So they had a seventy-million-dollar complex for sports alone, so it's very, Texas, sports is like king, you know? And, but they, actually, it's all about character development, and they, so the, several hours we were there, they talked about character development, how it is associated with all the sports. But there are a hundred and six thousand students in this district, a little bit north of San Antonio, and their graduation rate is ninety-five percent. And it was just amazing. And it was, I mean, it was super good, so.
Great.
It's about it. I said a lot of other good, everything I went to was worthwhile, so.
Awesome. Thank you. I, yeah, I have heard of that high school. My husband's first cousin was the first basketball coach for the D-one program at University of Texas San Antonio, and like he said, sports is king in Texas, and they really spend a lot of money on that. So that'd be, I bet that was an interesting, we'd love to have seen what it, what it looked like. Thank you. Only thing I have to add is on last Saturday, I was the only one basically kind of left in town besides Dr. Leone, and I was asked to join Representative Congressman Kilmer, Representative Jenkins, and Representative Jake Fai at a town meeting put on by our students' Lives Matter. And the students were from Sammy, Lakes High School, and Antiright Seminary. And it was to talk about school safety, about guns. The sad thing that happened is that a group of gentlemen, and I'll use that term loosely, chose to come and make their points about their gun rights. Tried to disrupt the meeting, it did not happen, and the majority of people there were very much in supportive of what we are doing as a district, and about our policy, we're not going to arm teachers, we're not going to have guns on our campuses. And also, just talking about moving forward with state and federal legislation on banning of certain weapons, and also about having trigger locks in places to, that guns should be locked up at home. But I was very impressed with the students. It was their, their town hall, they did not yield to the, I will use the term bully, and that's what was going on. I think some of you have seen that in the media. And at the end, when we talked about, what we summed up, and I frankly felt very, very positive about what the future of this country's going to look like with that generation coming up. They were very articulate about what needed to happen and where they were, and it just, you know, made you, made us, I think all of us adults there, and especially, I think I was the oldest one by far on that panel, that, you know, we, we sometimes are not very positive in this country lately about what's going on, but it sure gave me a lot to come away from, and I thank Congressman Kilmer and Lori and Jake for being there, because at times, it was not a pleasant place to be sitting up there with some of that going on, but we did prevail, and at the end of the day. So that was the only thing that I have to offer.
Where did they have it?
At Mason Methodist Church. Church was pretty full, too, and it was, you know, there was about five of these individuals, and that was disruptive. The rest of the, of the community was there, were people that I have known for many years. That was my neighborhood I grew up in, and a lot of people, and I, there was almost a hundred percent support from, from them, and I did receive a very nice email from someone I didn't even know, sent it to all of us, and thanked us all for our comments and our positiveness, and apologized for some of the people there. So, but I was proud of the kids, but just beware, when we, these things are going on in our community, it's sad. One thing that I did take away from it is that, I think with the exception of one person, these men were primarily from Puyallup and up in the east part of Pierce County, they were not Tacoma residents. So perhaps that's one thing to, for us to take away. But they are going to try to disrupt things, and they also were, obviously had permits to carry, and they were, made sure that everyone knew that they did have their, their weapons there, and there was a lieutenant from Tacoma Police Department that was there, so we did have some, some security and some help. So anyway, moving on, no executive session this evening? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I also want to apologize for not making your program. I had been down with bronchitis for a while, and I was not allowed to get out, but I really wanted to, and it sounded like I missed an awesome show.
Well, I'm working on it next year, so.
Oh, good. I'll be there. Hopefully, I won't get bronchitis again.
No report.
Okay.
Can you do a shout-out to Truman?
Can you do what?
A shout-out.
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to do a shout-out for Truman Middle School. Last night, I went to Battle of the Books from all the middle schools. It was held at First Creek, and it was awesome, and it was so much fun. And the final winner after like four sudden deaths was Truman Middle School, so I just wanted to shout out for them. And then also, this weekend, on Sunday, at eleven o'clock, there is a program called the Ninety-Second Newberry Film Festival screening party, and it is for our students who have written or have shot films, and we have a student at Baker, her name is Brooklyn Cantal, who is going to have her film debuted at the theater. So if you can, I think it's sold out, but they said you could call if you wanted to be on the waitlist, so. Congratulations to our middle school students.
So where are they doing that at?
It is at the Bluebird, the Blue Mouse, the Blue Mouse Theater. The Blue Mouse Theater, and Proctor, yeah, sorry, Blue Mouse.
Could I ask what the premise of the Battle of the Books is? What happens there?
So at the Battle of the Books, the students at all the middle schools have been preparing by reading, there's a set of like, I think it was about twelve books, and teams get together, and they all are responsible for reading all of the books and making sure that they know all the details. And then, so then they put up a statement on the screen and say, it might be, so who ate all the cakes, you know, in this particular book? And then they're, they sit in teams, and one of the team members have to come together, and they have to say which book that it really happened in of the twelve books they've read. And then they very dramatically stand up with it held close to their chest, and then they show the answer. Anybody who's right, then you show up your school. So I mean, there were like several rounds, and it was impressive, the detail and things that they went through, and it was great. And then after that, they had a, I wish I could remember her name, I'm sorry, but we, so then they added the points, and the two finalists were Meeker and Truman, and they had to do sudden death. So for, they kept showing the, showing the facts and getting the books, and then finally, they couldn't get to a tie, so they finally had to say, okay, whoever's first to stand up with the answer wins, which is, I hate, I hate sudden death. And then at the, on the last one, Truman pulled it out, so it was, it was fun. And then they had an author, a local Tacoma author that went to FAS, and the students asked incredible questions about how she started her writing career and what she did, and she asked how many aspiring writers were there, and it was pretty amazing. So it was a great event.
Great. Just another example of all the great stuff we're doing in TPS and making school fun.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir.
We have one more report.
I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Angelique Leone and Director Winskill for going, and I hope to see more board members there next year.
Okay, good. Thank you. We'll do our best. I really intended to be there, so. And kudos to Mount to Homa for winning the, on the unified sports and for your cultural stuff and, you know, moving ahead. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, we are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Heinz.
Question for the study session, the topic?
Oh, good question. I was going to ask that. What is that?
There are three topics for the study session. One, we, Tony Pace is going to go through our innovation process and kind of just review and make some suggestions and revisions for what we're doing with the innovation process. Roslyn is going to do a very high-level budget review of where we are with the budget and where we are with the legislature, and then Chris Williams is, Chris Williams is going to do a very good overview of where we are with construction and updates.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Leone's going to be off doing some important work, and we're going to miss him for a month. Be safe, and we look forward to hearing about your adventures when you come back. Okay, we are adjourned. Do we have closed session?
We do.
We do. It's not on my agenda, I apologize. The board will adjourn to a quick closed session. Thank you. Debbie, assistant meeting.
Yeah, there's something on there, I'm not sure what the third, that one needs to be.
Resolution, oh, on the bench here. Okay, still.